Okay, we have a form. First item on the agenda is the, or second item on the agenda is the review and acceptance of the August meeting minutes. If you haven't had a chance to read them, I'll read them. I have one question, and that is on line number ninety-seven. The House of Representatives reports that Ms. Rath, they've said it was agreed to the five thousand dollar estimate to provide plans was approved.
Yeah, I was confused on that one, too.
Waiting to hear back from the engineer. I think he needs a little more explanation. I really can't relate to what it was.
Yeah, basically, we're talking about the five thousand dollar estimate from the engineer was agreed upon by the committee that it made sense.
Estimate for what?
Yeah.
For the four different possible scenarios for the setup of the road.
The entrance.
The gateway.
Oh, the ent- this is the gateway sign project, okay.
You probably should state what the committee is to it somewhere.
The town court working.
Town court working.
Yeah, and I would like it to say that the gateway entrance project was approved.
Yep. And there's some grammar that needs to be ironed out there, too.
The entrance and the engineering of the, of different options for budgetary development. So the, the project itself hasn't been approved, just the expenditure of the five thousand dollars to do the engineering.
Right.
Yeah, the very initial engineering.
Just save somebody to look at it.
Well, and give us four different possibilities and general price ranges for each.
Yeah, so we can have a discussion about those options and decide which one goes forward to town meeting if any.
Got it, sure.
Okay.
Should we clarify on the paragraphs writing on line one thirteen that it's, um, talk about the payment issue regarding Conway covering the, should we specify the town of North Conway, so that...
It's not, it's the Conway Fire District.
Okay, the Conway Fire, or so specify Conway Fire District?
Yeah.
Is that something new, Mark, that coverage from Conway that they've asked?
It's not, the coverage is not new. They're, they're request to be reimbursed as soon as.
Okay.
Any further comments on the minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Uh, second that?
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Okay, the August minutes as amended has been accepted. And next item is public hearing. I guess there's nothing on the agenda that didn't happen. So we'll move on to new business in the twenty-year CIP. We all have copies of it in your package. I guess, Mark, did you wanna make sort of a presentation?
Your, the first page of your packet is a sheet that looks like this. This is our current, it's now written in Chinese.
I do.
So this, these are our existing bond, outstanding bonds, including down here in, on the bottom right corner, the USDA rural development bond for the water and sewer. So this is all of the current debt that we have. The larger rectangle here shows you the debt by paint, by department. And that breaks it down into each of the projects for each department. The smaller rectangle beside it just totals it for each department. The town is limited in the amount of debt that it can have based on the type of debt. So the town buildings and vehicles and that sort of equipment and that sort of thing can be three point five percent of our total valuation. So that fluctuates every year. In addition to that three point five percent, we can also have ten percent of our total valuation for our water department. So if a project is specifically for the water department, it can be up to another ten percent. The sewer department, because it's, it is controlled and regulated and required by the federal government, has no limit at all. So if it's a sewer-related project, it does not count towards our debt limit. We are, we have, we report every annual report. We put in our new valuation and we reported last year. We're somewhere around about the eight or nine percent range for total debt. And that includes all three, town, water, and sewer. We're not using any, you know, much of our total capacity for our total limit. Okay, any questions on what our current debt is?
Why is the water sewer improvements with a total principal of about, looks like seven, one point seven or one point eight million, as compared to the town water and sewer, a total of three point seven million? Why is the interest that we're paying over the same period up the same? You get double the debt on one, it seems.
I don't.
If I look at the totals for the water and sewer improvements.
One point seven seven.
One point, one point eight.
Yeah.
And I look at the total of the town water and sewer at three point eight.
Town water.
That's double the debt over the same period of time.
Well, because a lot of our debt is very old and we've paid the principal amounts. So the amount of prin- or interest, so we've paid that interest, so the interest is lower. If you just look at each one of the, each one of the boxes, it shows you the total debt, the, the principal payments that we have left and the interest payments. And you'll see we only have, because some of these are pretty old, like up here, we only have one or two payments left. So the interest amounts are low.
In other words, the payment of seven, three, eight oh eight in the total debt is much more principal?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so that's where we are right now. Then we can go to the eleven by seventeen sheet of paper, which is the twenty-year CIP, the big sheet. As a result of looking at the ladder truck, the ladder truck committee asked department heads to look out further than our usual six-year CIP. So we went back and we went through all of our vehicles, all of our facilities, and something that we haven't been doing until the need comes up is we, we've looked at the infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads, as far as distribution pipes and collection systems and the road network. And we've included those all the way out to fiscal year twenty thirty-eight. A lot of this are our estimates. We've based our cost estimates on our current costs that we've seen in the last few bids. And then we just added percentage increases to them as we went years out. But we have tried to include as many of these projects as we could.
I thought it was construction.
I thought it was a grinder.
An old dehumidifier.
Try to keep the water out. Um, so I don't know how you want to break this down, but I can go through each section with you or however you wanna handle it, Eric.
Well, you might as well go down to the sections.
So the highways, a couple of things, we've created a road repair and maintenance reserve line item. And we've actually created that kind of repair and maintenance reserve for highways, wastewater, and water. The idea behind that is in between the major projects, this would give us the ability to affect small sections of road, road edges, drainage like culverts that might become plugged or something like that. But we have an amount each year. And then if we don't use the maintenance reserve and we, we need to add it to the larger projects because a bid comes in over or we expand the work that we were expecting to do, we'd have an amount of money in those reserves that we could apply to the major projects.
And this last column, way over on the right, that says accumulated reserves, that's current?
That's what we currently have in those areas. Yeah.
Could, could you just explain to me what the, the CR, SM, MR, BT, those things are, please?
If you look down on line sixty-five and sixty-six, they're just shorthand for the roads that we are doing.
Can, can I ask, like, so line two and three and then forward on?
Yeah.
There's another one under wastewater, which I've lost. Oh, yeah, line six fifteen. So it seems like there's a, a clear vision that the two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, that those are gonna be coming up. Does it make sense to break them up into smaller amounts leading up to that, like hundred thousand, hundred thousand?
What I've done is I, those are, rather than cash, what we've done is the maintenance and the, the repair and maintenance reserves are cash each year, so they'll come out of that year's taxes. The larger projects, a hundred thousand dollars or more in the financing side that we'll look at next are all bonded. So that's why it's broken down that way.
It shows up as cash, though.
It shows up as cash on line two, but if you go down to line three and four and five, it's, it has a B beside it, so it's a bond.
I was looking at line fifteen.
Okay, line fifteen.
I thought that's what you were saying.
Yeah, that was line two.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm sorry, I didn't change the C to a B. The two hundred and fifty thousand is a bond. And if you go over to the fiscal year twenty-seven column and follow it down, you'll see that the five hundred and fifty thousand is under bonding, so.
Mark, do you, how many miles of roads does the town contain?
About seven miles.
About seven miles. And to resurface a road, do we have an estimate of what it roughly costs a mile or half a mile?
No, because it depends on whether or not we have to do base work or.
Well, on a twenty-year cycle, would you have to do base work on all the roads every twenty years?
Not every road, but you will have to do drainage work, you'll have to replace culverts, you'll have to.
And, and you think this is enough to do all of that work?
Yes, that's.
All right, how, we got two main bridges that, that, that I believe the town owns.
Yes.
One right on, on the Loop Road, on Valley Road, yeah.
On West Branch.
We are anticipating no maintenance to those bridges over a twenty-year life cycle?
Right now, they're, they're not, there's nothing that needs to be done on either one of those bridges at the present time.
Is not worthwhile putting a reserve away for those or including those somehow in the road repair?
I mean, they, the bridges could, the one on West Branch Road could wash out next year, but.
Well, I'm more concerned about just all the wear and tear, rust, you know.
We just repaired, we just repaired the bridge on West Branch Road. And any work that we would have to do, the minimal amount of work that we would have to do on the Valley Road Bridge would be done when we're addressing Valley Road, depending on which section of Valley Road we, we actually do.
So the steel beam bridge?
Yeah.
What about painting of the beams?
That's probably in the repair and maintenance arena. It's not, it's not a major, it's not a major repair. Those bridges are inspected by the state on whenever they feel they need to inspect them. And then we're given a report on the status of the bridge. And the Valley Road Bridge is in very good repair right now, the last time that it was, it was inspected, including the abutments, the, the concrete and all that. And then the West Branch Road Bridge, because of the damage it sustained in Irene, we redid the decking and redid the, the abutments. So those, those are new within the last, what, six years, five, six years, so.
We patched, we patched the decking.
We patched the decking, but it was inspected as far as the steel supports before we put the, the new decking down. And we did, we did go in and redo the concrete work on the abutments where it was undermined. So it's in pretty good repair.
And those abutments are on piles, I think, too, I think.
The abutments on West Branch are on rock, on ledge, and, and we put concrete.
I thought they were in piles.
I don't think so. I think they're on rock. Now, we may have to, like, the pedestrian thing on, that's attached to the bridge, we may have to repair that or replace that, but again, that's a repair and maintenance item. It's made out of wood, it, you know, it should be a very low-cost thing to go back and do.
Might not be a bad idea to put something on there for painting, though, because I think that that's probably something that's going to come up.
Okay.
They're both steel beam bridges, I think, and.
Yeah, they are.
That's usually the first thing that comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it just strikes me that you hear about, you know, all these horror stories in the states about all the bridges failing and reporting, and we're saying we don't have to spend any money to repair and maintain the ones we have.
And I think you'd be surprised how expensive it is to paint that beam, those beams.
Yeah.
Is that a special paint?
Well, they gotta strip off the old paint.
They gotta get the old paint off, you can't let it go in the river, so you gotta capture it all, I mean, it's.
Mark, is there any thought about the guardrails down there on West Branch Bridge?
The guardrails are done definitely either within our maintenance budget. I mean, it's just like any other guardrail here in town.
Is there any thought about replacing them?
Yeah, we have sections of road that Jim will either fix the guardrail or replace it. There, there's nothing this year that we're planning to do.
No, if you walk down through there, you can see they're kinda gnarly, okay.
But that's, again, they can do that. The guy, our own people can do that. It isn't something we have to.
So we have plans to do it?
We, he looks at all of the guardrails and replaces what he feels he needs to.
Okay.
We, we try to get maximum time out of them.
Okay.
Mark, are all of the projects been approved, or is it just more of a concept, planning?
No, it's a conceptual planning.
Document for the departments?
None of these, we don't, other than FY eighteen, we're not looking at.
So every year?
Anything that is, every year will start.
Um, on line fifty-one, you've got four hundred for the pond. Is that for the dam?
That is for the dam.
Has it come up with the state?
We have meeting either next week or the twenty-fifth to start, hopefully, negotiating the plan that we're gonna bring to town meeting in eighteen.
What about all the growth that's taking place within that pond that we've had mitigated a while ago and is now growing back again?
Well, that's something that is not included in this, but, you know, if, if we want to go back and do another dredging project, right now, our focus is on getting DES off of our backs with regards to the deal.
Okay.
I guess it, it's something we're gonna face because the Forest Service doesn't allow us to do any work upstream on Snow's Brook. And we get a lot of, of material from Snow's Brook during heavy rain events. And the ski area has been trying to upgrade trails and, and upgrade the culverts so that they can pass more water. If you remember, our wetland scientists pointed that out as a, as an issue, that the culverts are undersized on the trails and that leads to erosion.
Are in pretty bad shape up there.
And some of them are in very bad shape.
Yeah.
But they, they do, the Forest Service is looking at that right now. I don't know how long it'll take them to approve any changes, but if they can upsize the culverts, then we're probably gonna get less erosion and we're probably gonna get less material into Corvus Pond. But we don't control that land, so.
I, I would say that we should, if we're, if the town want, and, and everything that I've heard would sent, would, would be that the town wants to continue to have the pond, then I think we ought to plan on a twenty-year cycle. That it's got to be, it's gotta be dredged, you know, at least once every twenty years. I mean, and it's unrealistic not to assume we're, at some point in time, we're not gonna do that.
Well, I just foresee us coming down and looking in Campden. That used to be some sort of a lake, I've been told.
Right, otherwise you will, you won't, well, you can abandon the pond, which is what Campden has decided to do. But I don't think the town wants to abandon the pond.
It's a big thing here. But I, I think you're right.
But I don't, but I think every twenty years, you're, you're gonna have to, every now and then, go in there and dredge that whole thing out, which I think is, again, about a half million bucks or so.
Yeah, I think that would be a good budget number, I, you know.
Can we get grants or anything like that to help us out?
No.
Or media or anything?
I doubt it.
Really?
I mean, at the time, who knows, but.
Does it really have to be dredged?
I don't count on grants.
It has to be.
You know, the likelihood of getting people to give you money to do anything is pretty low.
We've lost, we've probably lost, I'd say, five to seven feet in the deep areas just from materials coming back.
Oh, it fills up rapidly.
Yes, really, and it's every storm that happens.
And the storms seem to be getting worse, so.
When was the last time we dredged, has anybody?
Two thousand nine.
Nine.
So twenty-nine, we would, around two thousand, or twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty-four, somewhere in that twenty to twenty-five year range.
I have some nice pictures of that.
So if you want me to have that in, I will.
I think so. I think it's reasonable to assume we'll do it. And I, I think we should add in some estimate on maintaining those bridges as well. I mean, I, I don't think we can get by with spending virtually nothing on them over this life cycle.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll, I've got bridges down and I will put a dredging budget in there.
Just out of curiosity, and I guess from my own ignorance, is it better to build up cash reserves or do most towns go for bonds for larger projects? I mean, what's, how do you find that balance?
Well, what we've tried to balance is the cash, and we'll talk about the balance of the cash capital items, which part of the reserves are part of the cash because you're raising that tax money and putting it into accounts and holding on to it until you need it.
Right.
And then versus the bonding, and so we'll, I'll get to that on another show.
There's, there's, it's a lengthy discussion. Let's say there's a lot of disagreement as to which way to go. The objective is to stabilize the tax rate. What you don't want is to have lumpy tax rates where one year you have to collect a lot of money, the next year you don't have to collect money. So one of the tools that some towns use is to reserve money into counts, you know, and, and you do it primarily because you're trying to stabilize the tax rate more than any other factor. It's the easiest way to say it, I think.
These reserves, are they put into something that gain the interest, that one or two percent?
Yeah, but they get virtually no interest, no interest involved.
That's the problem with reserves right now. If you have an interest rate that's up around five or six percent or whatever, because you also are borrowing money at a more expensive rate. So rates have stayed at or below four percent for the past ten years, so that's, you know. And our return on the reserves is less than one percent right now.
But I think you've done it right here, because I think reserves are for maintenance-type things. Reserves, you need the cash, they, you go along, now the small, something breaks, you gotta have it fixed, you'd like to have that money in there. For purchases of new or replacement of large objects, I think that the bonding is better. The reason I say that is because bonding occurs during, or, or payment for that bond occurs during or after the purchase, which means that people are paying for what they're getting the benefit of. If you try to build up a reserve to buy a ladder truck or something, then you're, all the people are paying this money in prior to getting the advantage of what that money's being used for. So I think that the, the, the reserve is good for maintenance, but the bonding is good for purchases of items that are going to be used.
Well, with, and I would just clarify, I, I, I don't believe running a town is all that much different than running your own household. Well, with, and I would just clarify, I, I, I don't believe running a town is all that much different than running your own household. Debt is debt.
Right.
And, you know, you don't wanna just say, because it's easy to borrow money because it doesn't look like you're paying anything in the current year. So I would say that generally, as a rule of thumb, that there's, you know, when big-ticket items, like if you're spending, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna consider bonding. But when you're under that threshold, you ought to be able to get it out of your own funds. And if you can't, then you can't afford it, you know. Well, and, and that's a pro, you know, I understand that's a problem, but I have a problem with using debt to cover little items going forward. That's like credit card debt.
Yeah, but that's if the debt keeps growing. If, if you establish a certain amount of debt and that debt continues, you're paying it down, you're adding to it, you're paying it down, you're adding to it. As long as it's not growing, that means you're not spending more than you're, you're buying.
Right.
It's only when it starts to grow, it gets out of control. But I think that's what the CIP plan is supposed to do. I think the CIP plan is supposed to keep track of that.
Keep, it, it's to ma, to, to get an estimate of how much do we really need to spend in capital over a long period of time. Right, I mean, all this is, is a very crude estimate of what are our total needs as a town for, for capital spending.
But I think, Bill, if you, if there were to be a line at the bottom of this chart.
Yeah.
That would show the outstanding debt for each one of these particular years, as this projected, because they're gonna pay some of it down, they're gonna bond certain things. And if it showed that that debt was relatively constant, would that be, doesn't, wouldn't that seem like a reasonable way of doing business? Yes, it's a debt, but it's not growing.
Can be decreased.
Or decreased, sure, it could decrease, but.
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, you, you basically mortgage your house, I mean, I mean, and maybe, maybe you take a loan out for your car, but beyond that, personally, do you, do you subscribe to the theory it's okay to carry credit card debt year in and year out? As long as it's not growing?
But that's a little different, because you think on a personal basis, it's, it's your own investment and your own, you get to use that investment. But when you're dealing with other people's money and you're asking.
Yeah, well.
You're asking this group of people to pay for something that this group of people's gonna be using in the future.
Could I, on that, uh, philosophical point, I think we all make that general agreement when we become property owners of residence. I am paying for things in my taxes now, just to personalize it, that was agreed to by people before me.
Me, right.
And I, I just think that's the fundamental social contract that we have, and that should not really be much of a factor in the decision on spending money.
That's not what he's saying. What he's saying is you're getting the benefit of what those people bought.
Right.
So you're paying for what you're getting, is what I think there is.
Right.
But you, you get the benefit of the water pipes, the sewer pipes that someone else paid for.
Right.
You know, you get the benefit of those.
And someone will get the benefit of something I paid for.
That's correct.
That, to me, is the basic social contract.
But, but the point was that you don't ask people to pay for things before you have them, I think.
Well, you, you do wanna make sure that you can afford to, to buy the things you're buying.
Right.
That's the fundamental question. Can you afford to buy the things you're buying? And what you don't, to me, you don't wanna get into a situation where you say, well, I'm gonna spend this amount of money on these items, and then all of a sudden, you find out, oh, the state changed the rules, and we need to spend a couple of million dollars to repair a bridge, and then we say, well, we don't have that kind of money. Well, I, you know, that's.
So can we, I think that's a good point, Bill, and that, that goes right to this chart.
Right.
To this.
It was a lot.
Well, no, I, I just think that's exactly what Bill is talking about.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So I, I think this has been a good, because we used to stop at, in this case, if you look at this chart and you go to twenty-twenty-three, okay, we used to stop looking at this, and the dotted line used to go straight down as we repaid debt. That's what it represented, right? So now we've extended that out twenty years, and we're all the way out to twenty-thirty-eight. We'll add the dredging and the bridge work and all of that to this. But what this is showing, a couple of things that the chart shows, and then I'll talk about the other piece of paper. This shows that our, our maximum debt with the twenty-year plan that we have right now, the maximum debt at any one year that we would have would be the four-point-six-two-two million, okay? And that is total debt of water, sewer, everything in the town. And then it shows the ups and downs as we bond each of these projects. It shows that total debt number for each of those years, alright? That hashed area in there is for our unexpected, like Bill says. State comes back and has a new regulation at the wastewater treatment plant, and we have to spend a million dollars or whatever it is to, to meet that new regulation. That hashed area is where we would do those unexpected things. The other line that it shows is, the yellow line is our debt payments in each of those years. Now, this is principal only, but it does show the, the principal payments for each of the, for each of the years for the entire twenty-year CIP is pretty level, right? The yellow line, go, there's no big fluctuations, which I think is exactly what Bill is saying. We don't want our debt going up and down, year to year, because you can't, it, it affects the tax rate, especially with, with a small organization like us, if we have hundred thousand dollar swings in our total debt payments, that causes problems with the tax rate going up and down. So what we've tried to do with this plan is level off that yellow line. And I think, you know, this shows that what we're expecting to have to do is pretty level, okay? The blue line is just the actual, um, appropriations, and I know Terry, we're gonna figure out a better way to, to talk to the town about this, but that's the actual what gets voted on each year for new debt, okay? It does not mean we're paying that in that year, okay? Because it may take a year or two to even borrow the money if it's a large project. Because what we try to do is use bond anticipation notes, especially for the larger projects, so we know the exact amount that we have to bond. So that's, that's what the, the chart tells us. And then if you look at the other one, it's called the, um, debt service cash capital payment comparison. This is really a better picture because it takes into account the cash amount and the interest that we would be incurring from fiscal year two thousand eighteen through twenty-eight. I only did ten years because who knows what interest rates are gonna be, et cetera, after that. And I've shown the impact or the amount of the tax rate that would be necessary to make all of our debt and cash capital payments in those given years. So as an example, if, if we end up going and, and doing the dam project and, and everything else, and we do all the cash capital items that are in the CIP, this twenty-year CIP, for two thousand and eighteen, we estimate that two dollars and seventeen cents out of the tax rate would go towards the payment of those cash capital items and the debt service payments, alright? That's about a ninety-one thousand dollar decrease from what we're doing in two thousand seventeen, when you total up those same numbers. And then I've just carried it out each of the years, and I've in, I've included the new interest estimates. It's a very simple interest calculation. I've used, uh, four percent. Right now, interest rates are lower than that. I anticipate they're gonna go up, who knows? You guys know, please tell me, and we can talk about my investment account. And then I've included, again, that all the cash capital items and all the new bonding in the twenty-year plan and have laid it out. And you can see the tax rate portioned, and it's pretty stable. You know, we don't, we're trying to level out those ups and downs. So, and then on the back sheet, on the second page, Terry just asked that I show you the valuation, um, numbers. And we're assuming a point-five percent growth in value. We do get some new value out of, uh, building permits. There's not a lot of anticipated new construction, 'cause we don't have a lot of land left. That is gonna be affected every five years by the reval like it is this year. Sometimes that's gonna go up, sometimes it's gonna go down. You know, I, if you want me to make a different assumption, if you want me to make that zero, we can run the numbers with it as zero. I don't, you know, whatever you guys are comfortable with. And then the final thing on the bottom of the second page is, I just went back five years and showed the, the amount of the tax rate that went to cash capital and debt service payments, principal and interest over the past five years.
Can we go back to the, the draft, the, the project list here? And let, let me just give you some things that I would wonder about. How much would it cost to build a sewage treatment plant?
Right now?
Yeah, if we had to replace that.
Three or four million dollars, probably?
Including the pipes, all the sewer pipes?
No, probably, I don't know, seven million, ten million?
Ten million? When I, when I used to work, we used to use a rule of thumb, and it's just a rule of thumb, that if you've got a ten million dollar, you know, capital item, you better plan on spending ten percent per year to maintain it. And I don't know, maybe the answer is five, three, but it would seem to me if we've got a ten million dollar investment in the sewage treatment plant, that over a twenty-year period, you're gonna expect to spend a fair amount of money maintaining that thing. Now, this says, we're not gonna hardly spend anything. Well, I'm talking ten percent per year, so, you, you, you know, if you looked at ten million dollars, I mean, you, you could expect on ten million dollars that, what are we gonna spend, five hundred thousand a year? But it can't, I, I, I just think we're underestimating to what it costs to maintain our already existing structures and stuff, that they're just not gonna go on and on and on forever. Eventually, all the piping is gonna have to be replaced. Eventually, the lagoons are gonna fail. Now, when and specific projects, I don't know, but I don't think we're allowing that, figuring that sooner or later we're gonna spend some money. Likewise, buildings, I look at buildings, and I say, okay, we're gonna spend six hundred fifty thousand on the pond, we're gonna spend nothing on the rest of the buildings? I mean, it's half a million in twenty years, that's nothing.
But we've spent nothing for forty years.
Right, but are you gonna do, but that's what you want, is for another twenty years, we're gonna spend nothing on the buildings?
We'd love to, but.
Well, then I think you gotta, I, well, you're, you see, you're making a ju, I, I think it's, it's, the buildings are needed as much as the vehicles are needed. See, I think we come up with a very good estimate of what it takes to replace vehicles because they're obvious to us. You know, well, every five years, we get rid of a car, every six years, we get rid of a truck. But a building, these buildings aren't gonna last forever. Eventually, someone's gonna get stuck with having to do something. And, and I don't know if we're correctly, you know, figuring out how much money in the long run might go for those things. But that's just my personal point of view. I mean, or otherwise, it makes it look like we can afford the vehicles forever until we reach the decision that the building is termite-infested, it's gotta be torn down, and now we're stuck with a ten million dollar thing. Well, which we now spent on other areas. Likewise, I look at things like the trail system. We talk about, we wanna build bicycle trails and all this stuff. Well, it's gonna take some money, you know, what, how much money do we wanna set aside for doing those things? And I think we ought to be setting aside, we ought to be planning down the road just in a general sense that we're gonna have to spend money against some of this stuff. It's not, we're just not gonna get it for, you know, we just can't avoid it forever.
The, the, the trail system, the biking trail system, okay? Is it up to the town to maintain, if we were using them, is it up to the town to maintain those trails in the summer months? I know in the winter, we do.
If we believe that the, if we believe that the Forest Service is, you know, some fairy godmother that's gonna rain money down and fix all the trails, I think, no, they're not gonna do that. So the answer to your question is, do you wanna maintain them or not?
Yep.
Now, it'd probably be a fight to even get them to agree to let us maintain them. But, but the people talked about a trail network within the town, you know, for bicycle trails. Well, you're gonna have to acquire land, you're gonna have to build them, you're gonna have to do all these things. If we were serious about doing this, we ought to somehow, in the long-range capital plan, anticipate that we're gonna have to spend money on these things. Now, I'm not begrudging the vehicles. I know we keep coming back, but my point of view is, is that, it's just my point of view, is we are totally underestimating what it takes to do the rest of the stuff.
Maybe we should make a list of all the things.
Oh, it's lengthy.
If, if, if you.
Well, where is the, where is, we, we, we did the village study, village pedestrian, where's the, where's the money to implement the village pedestrian study?
There's, there is no consent, I don't know what to put in there, Bill. I mean, I could put millions and millions of dollars.
Millions, that's what I'd put in.
But that's not real.
Well, it is realistic, I'm not saying that you'll ever get approval, right? But you, but suppose the consensus was that the town wanted to do that, where's the money coming from? If we don't anticipate at some point in time that those things might happen? I, I don't know if they'll approve it, but I think they'd like to approve it, but we don't ever present those things.
Okay, but, so that, where it would come from is this, you know, every year, we can take this and put it up to here. We can take this and put it up to here.
I, I'd just like to get it in a long-term estimate of the town's capital needs. Now, if you wanna discount them and do other things to them, it's fine, but I, I, I think we're gonna be, we're, we're spending eight hundred, according to this, eight hundred thousand dollars a year in capital. We're, we, I, I guarantee you, we're gonna spend a heck of a lot more than eight hundred thousand, there's four hundred thousand, it's eight million over twenty years. I guarantee you, we're gonna spend a lot more money than that, guaranteed.
I absolutely agree with you.
I'm just trying to get, what is that number? We got to come up with a number. I, I, you know, to me, it's like twenty million. Twenty, thirty. I mean, just replacing, you, you, you know, this building is ten million. It's ten million dollars to build a new town hall.
It was, well.
Well, it was turned down, and it's turned down because people didn't think they could afford it.
Turned down at two million, it's not gonna get approved at ten million? So why would I put a ten million dollar building into a capital project when they turned it down for two million and we were building, and now?
Because, because, the question is, does the town need it? And if the town, you know, needs it, and the town needs to spend money on other things, I'd like to get an estimate of what those things are. Yeah, granted, they'll turn them down, but.
Well, you know yourself.
If you don't plan on them, nothing's gonna happen.
The age population in this town are, were older, and
Right.
we, we don't wanna spend that money, and then we wanna disapprove what is proposed.
So, when we approached this, I, you know, we, we are, we've been talking about a new town hall building, fire station, all of that. All of that since two thousand and six.
Right.
So, we have done everything from revamping this building to building a completely new one. We've looked at five or six different plans. We've, we've added on to this building, all of this. So, when we did this twenty year plan, we looked at what the absolute need was, which is, in our estimation, one additional bay and some renovations to the inside of the building. And that's what led to the five hundred thousand dollar item there. Sure, building, tearing, raising this building and building all new would be the absolute ideal. But if I didn't think that it's realistic in putting it in here when it's already been turned down.
What about?
A couple of times. So, that's why we approached it the way that we have. Same thing with the water and sewer lines. If, if we, all of the lines as to, to where we think they are right now, they're, they're in very good shape. We have a pretty young system compared to other towns in the state. We did put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, that there may be a section or, or, or a section, a small section of the lines that we absolutely have to replace. But sure, if, if you look at Snow's Mountain, the water line leaks that we've had and everything else. When we dig that up, there's a crack in the line, we repair it. That's about four thousand dollars to do that. Replacing the water line on, on Snow's Mountain Road would be seven, eight million dollars because you've got ledge, you've got, and if you have to go all the way up to the top of the hill, it's going to be millions of dollars. I just, I just didn't think it was realistic to put that in there when you can fix it for four thousand dollars.
Yeah, but the purpose.
To Bill's point, though.
Yeah.
There's, maybe, maybe it's paid for other than what shows on here, but obviously, it takes something to maintain this building, not talk about redoing it, rebuilding, anything like that. It has to be painted, it has to be roof repaired, there has to be new carpet sometimes put in, you know? You're going to maybe add a room here, do, do something there, do something, whatever. But there is maintenance that's required on a yearly basis. Where would that be covered?
It's going to be in the operating budget.
So, it's, it's someplace other than what would show up, it's not really capital improvements, it's a maintenance thing. So, there is money being put, put aside or being voted in to.
Voted in each year.
In order to ma, do that maintenance.
Yeah.
So, that this building, I can see where this building would still be here, much to your chagrin, and used in ten, fifteen years. But as long as, as long as the maintaining, as long as the money is maintained is there.
Absolutely right that, you know, at some point, this building, we're not going to be able to maintain this building. We, we have windows right behind me, right here, that are thirty-five years old.
Right.
Okay?
Building has a life.
And we can't, we're actually getting to the point where we can't open the windows.
Right.
Yeah.
So, all, all capital items have a life. I mean, they don't last forever, just like a ladder truck doesn't last forever. A building doesn't last forever. I, now, it lasts hopefully a long, long time, but it doesn't last forever. At some point in time, you got to face into, I should, I don't know the year, but, you know, I ought to plan. See, the purpose of doing, to me, in my mind, this exercise, because we keep coming back to the ladder, can we afford to spend a million plus on a ladder truck in light of other things that we might need to do? Now, if we come to the conclusion, we don't have to do anything else other than buy a ladder truck, well, of course, the answer is, you can afford to buy a ladder truck. But I would contend that more important, as important as a ladder truck, is getting Corcoran's Pond right. Getting the trail network done. Making sure that we have money to keep all these buildings, the water waste treatment plant, all these things cap, you know, maintained and current. Those things are important to do in my mind. And, and I, I think in the end, there'll be enough money for everything. But, but I think it would's unrealistic to say, to me, that we don't have to worry about that stuff. We do have to worry about that stuff.
But the wastewater treatment plant, we have worried about. We've rebuilt the clarifier tanks, we've re, we've.
And you're going to continue to do it, in my mind, forever?
Yes, we will.
Forever?
That's right.
Every year, this, you're going, you're going to keep pouring money into that thing, otherwise, it'll fall apart all the time.
Seems to me we're talking about, you know, two separate things here. One is your basic, you know, your maintenance and repair, and another is new capital construction.
Well, yeah.
Or replacement of capital, and I, and I agree with Bill. We will have to go back in and replace the clarifier tanks and replace the, the, um, the other tanks that we have in there. And, and you'll notice that we have an ammonia tank replacement, okay? The ammonia tank replacement is the last piece of the inside of the plant that we need to address, that we haven't addressed since the plant was built. So, right now, there, and there is a cycle, and beyond this twenty year plan, Bill's absolutely right. We're going to have to put another million, two million, eight million, whatever it is, into that building, absolutely. But that's what I've asked the department heads to tell us, between now and twenty thirty-eight. What do you know, sitting here today, what do you know we have to do? Then, we go back to this, and if something unexpected comes up, we take this number and move it up to here and borrow the money. That's what this capacity is showing us. And, and I really think that, um, water lines and sewer lines, are we going to have breaks? Yes, we have a reserve, we have a maintenance, repair and maintenance account. We can address those repairs, and if we find we need to replace a section of water or sewer line that we, that we didn't expect to have to do, we'll come back and modify the CIP. But this is our, our best estimate. And I agree, we'll put the bridging number in there and we'll put the dredging number in there because those are big ticket items that will show up in the next twenty years. As far as, you know, I can put a half a million dollars every year for water lines and sewer lines. Some years, we might use it, and some years, we might not, or some years, we might spend a million dollars. I don't, I don't know. But we got, we got a pretty tight system right now.
So, if this CIP was extended out to, say, fifty years, that's where you'd find this replacement of the, the sewer line and?
Yeah, and as far as the building, I would love to, to come in here and, you know, I talk to, to folks that have ideas about solar issues, about coming in and trying to redo insulation and new heating systems, because we're spending a lot more money year to year than we need to because we've got all of this old infrastructure. But I'd love to come in here and completely revamp it and add on to it and get the space that we need. And some of the things like fireproof storage of our records that we've been talking about since two thousand and five. We just haven't found a way to, that people will accept to do it. And that's why it's not included on the plan. We still have our public safety, um, holding cell in between our administration area and our public safety area. There aren't many towns in the state that do that. They've separated public safety for health and safety reasons. We haven't, but we're living in it.
I mean, could we, could we set up a plan to do things in sections within?
It's, it's, this is not trying to detail how much money. To me, this was not an exercise in trying to detail how much money you're going to spend each year. It's to come up with an estimate of how much does the town need to spend in capital improvement over a long period of time. And to me, that's, and, and then to take a look at, okay, i- if that's the amount of money you should plan on doing, then somehow, in our budgeting process, we've got to realize that some point along the way, that we're going to have to raise those kinds of monies, right? Now, you know, I, I personally, it's my, my opinion that this town needs a lot of capital spending. It's twenty, thirty years old, the resort is falling apart. And, and, um, and, and, and if the citizens don't want to take some of this on, I mean, we live in a fairyland. If we think that the, the, the business owners are kind of out of the, you know, that somehow, they're going to leap forward and spend money on fixing stuff. We've got aging plants and equipment and, 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 and we're not even maintaining the things that bring people now much. I thought the, the, the village study was a worthwhile thing, but that's not going to happen for nothing.
No, it's true.
You know, there's money involved in doing that. And I, we're not going to get a grant to do that. I mean, we're going to have to raise it as taxpayers, if we want to do it.
If we put it towards the town and, you know, have some sort of a definitive plan as to what, as far as capital to do some of the, start the infrastructure, and present it to the taxpayers and say, look, this is going to have an effect. You want to get out of Dodge?
Right.
Well, your houses aren't going to sell because there's nothing here to draw people here.
Right.
Okay?
That's the problem.
You got to maintain your house, well, guess what? You got to maintain the town.
Yeah, exactly.
Blank, blank, just the way it is, it's got to be. And I know there are people here in town, have been here for a while, that are headstrong and don't want to spend a penny more than they need to, but we have to. This town isn't going to keep going.
Bill, what if we did this? What if we took a number for total capital, for cash and for bonding? And instead of doing the, the project list like this and then finding out what the tax rate impact is, what if you guys gave us a number, like two dollars and fifty cents on the tax rate, okay? Which would equate to the cash and the bonding? And then we could go back and do what Bill has said and, and look at, okay, look, we have an extra two hundred thousand dollars, whether it's cash or bonding capacity. But, you know, in order to level out the two dollars and fifty cents of the tax rate each year, what projects would we do and what upgrades would we do? Sometimes the money may be just put into a capital reserve and saved up over several years, and then we come in and do the whole building, or whatever it is. But I can, we can flip-flop this and get the tax rate that every, the amount of the tax rate that everybody's comfortable with, equate that to an amount of money, and then look at this list and say, okay, if you had this available, what would you do? Because, yes, there's a lot of stuff we've ignored on this twenty year plan because I didn't think that it's realistic because of what people have voted on in the past. But if we want to approach it that way, and like Bill says, show people what we really need to do, I'm, I'm all for approaching it in that way.
I think that makes sense, yeah, because.
We could do that. We can go back and take a look at how much have we historically spent on capital? And, you know, it's like, it's like everything in your budget in your house, it's no different. If you've got so much income, you can, you can afford to say so much of that is going to be to cover the mortgage and everything else. And, 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 and you can say, okay, we ought to plan on spending, you know? And I think it'd be worthwhile that you, I think we do need to have a discussion with the town at some point in time. This is not about individual little items. It, the question is, where is the town headed?
Yeah.
And, and how much, and do we want to set aside money thinking that sooner or later, we're going to have to, you know, do something?
The bottom line, do we want this town to survive?
That, to me, is, yeah, right, I mean.
Do we want to attract more things going on within the town and the mountain? I mean, I, you know, we own homes here, and it's like, we're not getting any younger, but we're still here. And you have to face, face the fact that things have to be repaired.
In the last two years, we just went through this with ta, you know, and I finally got convinced that the, um, in the, in the last two years, five single-family homes sold in this valley in two years. Two of those are real oddballs that you almost can't even take as sales, and you got to look at the, so there's three. The two years prior to that, there were eight. And I'm sure if you went back two years prior to that, which I can't do, there was probably a number like ten. It, it's not going in the right direction.
No, it isn't.
And, 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 and just sitting around wishing ain't going to make it so, in my opinion, you know?
I mean, we completely wreck facilities. We don't have anything in here.
Right.
Other than redoing some drainage things on Corcoran's Pond. So, being able to go out and redo trails and.
Trails, boats, boats, all these things and amenities that we run, that they, that you don't get away for nothing. All this stuff, some, you know? But I like your approach, we can do that. I think we can go back and take a look at, how much do we think the town could afford to spend every year? And based on that, come up with.
But I also think that the, the monies that are put aside, for example, let's say, this building needs work, and we all know it does, okay? To be smart about if and what we do here would help it either maintain it for the future or do we start doing what needs to be done? Raising it and doing something else? I mean, the town voted for the garages over here, we voted for the salt thing over here. Those are two new buildings, but nothing was ever done here primarily. And this is the mainstay.
Well, I think, once we have a, a good idea of how much money is available to spend in any given year, then we can prioritize what the projects are.
But it's going to be smart spending within here.
Of course, abso, well, anywhere in town, yeah.
But more so for this facility.
Right.
Okay, then, uh. So, you've got the last five years on the, on the back of the sheets that have the annual amounts. So, we've spent anywhere, this year, we're going to be around two dollars and forty-five cents of the tax rate. And then going back, we've spent anywhere from two dollars and twenty-five cents to three dollars and eighty cents. And going back beyond that, you're, you're going to be in that same range, which was the portion of the tax rate that was set aside for capital. Prior to two thousand, it's virtually zero. Because we didn't even have a CIP at that point, and it was a year-to-year thing, and you had wide fluctuations in the rate.
But I really, I think at town meeting, it needs to be presented for the naysayers that, look, this is as much your investment as it is ours.
So, do you need us to agree on a rate?
So, well, I, I mean, I'd like to at least start the conversation so that we have something that we can go back. If you pick a number and if you don't like the results, we can pick a different number and we can go back and modify the plan.
It's a planning exercise.
It's a planning exercise for us.
Exactly.
So, what, you know, is two dollars and fifty cents, or is it two dollars, or? Because if you, the current plan, we're right around a dollar fifty to a dollar eighty, dollar ninety, so.
But Bill, are the selectmen going to agree to what, if we decide to do something to increase the tax rate?
Well, it's not a question of the selectmen going to agree. It's a question is, will the town, can you convince the town, to your point, some point in time, you got to make the argument, you know, standing still is, is all we're going to see, and, and that's an opinion. You could, you could make the argument that the la, that decline in home values over the last two years. It's just a fluke, you know, and it'll reverse itself, you know? I mean, you could take that argument, or you could, you could look at it and say, no, it's a real indication of what?
Just like global warming?
Well, right, and, and, and do we need to do anything about it? Now, maybe the best thing is to do nothing. I don't know the answer to the question, but I, but the trends. Now, maybe the best thing is to do nothing, I don't know the answer to the question, but I, but the trends are disturbing. I mean, you can't deny the trend, I mean, that's fact.
So if we take the average of the tax rate for the past five years, it's two point nine six is the average. So do we look at two ninety-five to get a more round number and see what that brings back?
Well, two fifty or three dollars, I mean.
That's a dollar more, that, so that's three hundred thousand dollars a year more than what we currently have in the year.
Right.
Is that enough? I don't know, but I'm telling you, that's.
Well, it seems, it seems like a pretty radical difference between these last five years and what we're looking at on the other side of the page. I mean, that's that's why I just thought, take the average of of what actually happened in history.
Well, and that's because we're retiring, we've retired over the past five years. We've retired a lot of debt and not incurred a lot because we haven't really othered, because we're so focused on the water and sewer project, we haven't done, if you look at it, a whole lot of other uh, capital projects. And that's the other thing that has really kinda put us in this holding pattern is the fact that we were trying to get the water and sewer thing because it was a four million dollar project, tried to get that out of the way uh, before we started taking on anything else.
Or what if we split the difference, say, two seventy-five?
I will work with whatever number you guys want. Bill, is that is that a good way to do it?
I think I think it is a good, I think it's a good way to do it in terms of looking at, trying to answer the question, what do we think is a town we can afford to spend on capital improvements across the entire town? What, you know, and and then the the place you start is with the, you know, okay, what are we doing today? That's the base tax rate, and that's this amount of money. And then answer the question, okay, if this is the amount of money we get to spend per year, what's the best use of those funds? What do we wanna spend them on?
Right, and and another way that we could do it is leveling off this chart.
See, I I I personally view that we're making it too complicated when we get into debt charts and implying that the debt's gonna fall off. To me, it's it's a simple exercise of how much money do we think we have to spend? Then you may, you know, and then you can make decisions, do you wanna bond it, not bond it? That's just a question of where are the funds coming from? But to me, the thing that we we should wrestle with is how much money do we need to spend and what's the priorities? I I think more important than how much money can we afford to spend, it's the question, what's the priorities? What's more important, that we build the vision that's in the the study? Or that we continue to invest in vehicles? Or we fix this building? Or we fix the roads?
You know, people complained about the eighty thousand that we spent or ninety thousand we spent on that study.
Well, but it got approved, I mean, the majority of people approved to spend the money.
But you hear a lot of people complain about it.
Oh, of course.
You know, but we're gonna have them anyway.
It's the same people who won't spend money to enact any of the.
That's right.
And any of the, any of the.
Right.
Concepts that were put forward in that study, so.
I agree.
But I I don't think the conclusions of the study, you can you can argue about were they right working on signs and da-da-da, but let's, you know, I think a lot of people thought that the, you know, the study group thought the recommendations are pretty good. Now, I think it's beholden on us to say, okay, were they good enough that we think, that as a planning board, we think that we should advocate it? Well, how much money is it gonna take? It's gonna take a lot of money. But some, if somebody doesn't advocate it, nothing's gonna happen.
Right.
And then we're just gonna, I think that the signs are already in place, I mean, you know. It to think that the ski mountain can turn it around on its own, I wish it could, but I just don't think it's, I don't think they could do it. Or that some fat daddy's gonna come in and buy the whole thing for fifty million dollars and rain money down on the town and fix everything is probably not realistic. I hope we could find such a body.
We're looking at again maybe two different things. One is, I think what you're arguing for may be a a strategic plan.
Yeah. Right, and 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 that was only in the context of of, to me, that the thing we keep spending money on is vehicles. And I'm not begrudging the vehicles, but I think that's a small portion of what we need to spend money on.
No, I think he's.
He's arguing for enacting the strategic plan.
But we have one.
Yeah, right.
But no, I think, well, is this the strategic plan? I'm I'm hearing.
It is the strategic.
But Bill is saying it's missing things then.
Yeah, right, to me, it's not, because I'd spend money in other areas.
Right.
Yeah, before I'd spend money on some of this stuff.
Well, that's the feedback that we need, is what, where you, what is the priority then? Where do you want us to look first? What what do you want us to do? Because we know that we left stuff out of here, we did it purposely because there are things that were never been funded, that we've had discussions about, and that no one has a, any interest in doing in the past. If you want us to put it in there, if that's the priority, we'll put it in there. But I didn't think it was realistic to do it.
It seems like we ought to have some sort of a ratio, you know, twenty-five, whatever this ultimate number ends up being. We have like twenty-five percent should go towards existing facilities. And set, I'm making these up, and seventy-five percent towards new things, or whatever that ratio is that we think is appropriate. And then that would give everyone, department heads of town, a a better, yeah, a better grasp on what a budget is.
Well, you're talking about an O and M budget and a capital improvement budget.
Right, yeah.
Which we have, I think, it's just not clear, it's not clear perhaps to, it's clear to us, but I think it's not clear to the larger.
Well, no, what we, and I agree with Bill, we've way under budgeted, we've way under-resourced our capital budget.
Right.
When when you look at what we could be doing, and if we want to improve the the entire community, the resort side in addition to, he's absolutely right, we should be putting more, we have been ignoring this building, we have been ignoring other things. But that's because those are the conversations that we had in the past, and that seemed to be what, the way the town wanted to go. If we want this to be, hey, town, this is what we really need, that's a whole different plan to what we put together. If you want everything in there, we'll put everything in there.
Well, I think the the initial determiner of the priorities will be the department heads. I mean, these are the people that that know the systems and all that. So if you, if you incorporate what you had suggested a little bit earlier, the two dollars and fifty cents limit on the the contribu- contribution to the taxes. And you start out with the department's heads and have everything go through that, the idea again is that within the next twenty years, what would really be necessary? Are we gonna have to replace some pipes? Are we gonna have to have a new building? Are we gonna have to buy, redo the lagoons or whatever it is? You gotta have a starting point someplace, and I think that that priority, the priority's gonna have to come from the department heads to begin with. And it gets, has to be presented then, I think, to the planning board to see if those priorities agree with what the planning board had in mind. Now.
That's, that's.
No, but but you guys.
That's flipped.
I I think it is our, we're a planning board, and our role is to tell them.
You've got to tell us what the priority is.
But we can't without, if we've decided, what's gonna happen?
The money's off the table, Terry.
Well, I know, but that's.
You give us the priorities, and we'll tell you what it's gonna cost, and then you decide whether or not the town can resource that. I think.
We we get into this argument every time the ladder truck comes up, and the reason is because. Well, no, and 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 the question I have is, can we afford a ladder truck? If you look at the minimal, absolutely, we can afford it.
Yeah, we can afford it, but compared to what?
But should we spend that money on a ladder truck, or should we spend that money on a new trail network?
Right.
That's a whole nother question.
Right. Yeah, but where does this list come from? Where's this list of items come from? Or the list of what has to be done?
You guys tell us what you want, that's what the, you go back to the.
Yeah, but I have no idea whether or not the sewer.
I want, I want, I want property values rising in the town. And so I wanna make, I wanna make this town so attractive
I agree.
that that guests, tourists, and people wanna buy homes and live here, that's my goal.
There you go.
And 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 what do we have to do to 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 make that vision happen? Because it ain't gonna happen on a tour.
Call it a strategic vision plan.
That's, well, no, it in, that may mean you want some investment in the trail system, you want Corcoran's Pond to be a priority and to dredge it, and you want an updated waterfront, and you want, you know, those sorts of things which are gonna enhance.
Enhance the attractiveness of the community to outsiders.
You want, you know, all of this landscaping and new signage, okay? If that's, and then you want our buildings and our facilities to be updated. And, you know, you guys tell us what what your priority list is, and we'll go back and we'll put it together.
I mean, we already have the, some of the audience that comes in here between, I know everybody grudgingly says the hockey things, but like the weddings, you've got people coming in, looking in the valley for the first time going, oh, this place is beautiful, wow. But you've got an audience that we could expand on.
Right.
Well, we've, we've got a plan for that sort of thing, don't we? Did we pay ninety thousand dollars for that plan?
Yes, we do.
So shouldn't that form the basis?
I I would agree.
I would.
That would be fine.
I'd start with the recommend, with the core group, I mean, there there were a series of recommendations. We ought to commit ourselves, you know, for the, to me, the question is, are we going to do that or not?
But Wendy and Nancy, that hasn't been the focus of the town core working group, though. With that kind of visionary approach, it's been, how little can we spend and still get one piece of something done? Right, am I reading that wrong?
That is right, and part of that could be because we've been missing someone from the CIP on the committee for the past number of months to have that bring in, help bring in that big vision. But, yeah, I mean, it's it's been, I guess, the same as your approach with the building. We've gotten so much pushback on spending money that we've pared it down. So it would be fabulous to just say, take chapter one, two, three of this and put it in here. I mean, let's do it.
If it's worth doing, it's it's worth go fighting with the town to see if we can get them to do it. Now, I'm not suggesting, you know, I think it is worth doing, and and I think it's an iffy chance that we can get the town to approve it, but we're not gonna get them to approve anything we don't ask.
But I think it's a way the presentation will be made, too.
Absolutely.
You know?
Sure.
Put it on the plan.
That all works, but they're not gonna get a new town hall.
Well, no, you probably wouldn't get a new town hall, you know, but.
But you talk about trail network, you talk about those sorts of things, there's a fighting chance.
Well, but wait a second, though, there also has to be an investment in the infrastructure.
Well, there does.
That's right.
Because you don't wanna build all this beautiful stuff and then not be able to maintain it. So you still have to have the water system and the sewer system, you know, we'll put money in there to up, because there's no sense in not upgrading those things while we're doing a project like a section of road. You know, we might as well do the water and sewer lines while we do the road. You know, because why would we wanna go back and dig that sewer line up?
These are pretty big, pretty big aspirations for a town that doesn't wanna go over four and a half million dollars in debt.
Exactly.
Well, and that's why I don't think we want that number. By the way, is this in current dollars?
In current dollars.
So it's a current four and a half million, twenty years out?
Yeah.
So we just pretend.
Four and a half million, the four and a half million number comes from, because I know I know where it comes from. It comes from, again, a rule of thumb of how much would you incur as a private citizen in debt if you looked at your sources of income? So we have an income of about three to four million dollars a year. So how much, how much, how much you wanna carry in debt and carrying costs, you know, becomes a question? You know, you don't wanna have fifty percent of your income going to carrying debt. I don't think you do, unless, well, there are some cases where you can make an argument that we're gonna shoot the moon here, and we're gonna fix a lot of stuff, and and the income will rise, that's the old argument, if we spend the money, the income will go up.
But I have a question with regards to that. I mean, we don't own the center of town. Whether the mountain decides to maintain that center of town, too, which is the main flux of the place.
If we don't, if we don't, citizen, well, fact is, home values are declining. If you want that, you know, you could look at it, it's it's an aberration, and I hope it is, but my guess is it's not. So therefore, are you gonna just ignore that?
Yeah, I think as a town.
You're gonna ignore it as a town? I mean, yeah, granted, yeah, somebody else owns Town Square, well, maybe, maybe the answer is we we need to buy Town Square? Fix it. If that's the vision, then somehow we gotta, well, that's my attitude.
Yeah, but I think as a town, we need to do what we can, and, I mean, that's that's what's incumbent upon us.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, what's the action out of this discussion?
Well, I guess we have to come up with a a figure as to to present to Mark as to what the tax rate effect would be, whether it's two seventy-five, two fifty, two twenty-five. And I guess we have to come up with a list of wants.
Yeah.
Apparently, that would get us toward the goal of hopefully making the town more attractive. This is what I get out of it anyway. To present to the, to Mark, to incorporate into the capital improvements plan, to have him come back to us and say that our wants are much higher than the, the desire, yeah. I mean, that that we're willing to pay for, and then we would trim it down. So I guess the first thing to do is to determine what the rate, tax rate allowable would be. Now, we've heard anywhere from two seventy-five.
Two ninety-six was the average for the last five years, and two fifty was the number that Mark had.
And Mark was saying that, yeah, we're down, the CIP currently gets down around a dollar seventy-five, so someplace in between those two figures, I think, would be reasonable.
Two seventy-five, let's just do it, done.
Actually, I prefer something lower.
Can always change the number.
I like two twenty-five.
I I think lower, because that gives you an idea of what, where are you gonna be?
We, well, we have been paying almost three for the past five years.
Sometimes over three.
Over three, so it's, we're actually making it less by making it two seventy-five. I'm not quite sure what the point is of making it less than three.
Well, that was because we were retiring on the debt, you said.
Yeah, but but if we wanna keep it constant, why not keep it at three?
It's it's what is the level of investment that Bill had asked? What is, what can you, what do you feel you can sustain year over year?
Right.
But do we need to leave a little cushion in case there is a large bond item that comes up next year that we didn't foresee?
But that's the issue.
Well, I think the capacitor is the the bonding. The, as the, as time goes on, the debt goes down, and then when something occurs, you've got the bonding capacitor.
Okay, you get that whole hash, that whole hash green area in the current plan, but a lot of that's gonna go away with this approach. Because we're gonna start leveling off that debt at four million or whatever the number ends up being. And that's gonna be a straight line across.
We're looking at two seventeen? Is that what we're looking at? Two seventeen tax rate?
This year.
This year.
Uh, this year, I estimated at two forty-seven, right?
Two forty-seven?
No, two forty-five, two forty-five this year. Is my estimate.
That's twenty-eighty.
So maybe two seventy-five, or is this a good number?
Not, yeah.
And I think it.
Any number's good, frankly, just to get moving.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So how does everybody feel about two seventy-five?
Do it, what's the problem?
And we should have to take a look and see how, I mean, it's kind of an exercise. It's fantastic, I mean, we're we're jumping all over this twenty-year plan as if, you know, there should be, but this is the first time it's been done, and I think it's such a great thing to do, so let's just keep on with the exercise.
Yeah, it's a different way of looking at it.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
I don't know, I think it's easier to raise later than to lower.
Lower is easier to lower.
Oh, yeah.
If if you guys don't like what you, you know, I think it's much easier to go down to two fifty and what projects come out if you go down to two fifty, I think that's easier than, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
I would, I would do the maximum you feel you could present to town meeting. See where it comes out and then if you feel that it's too much, we'll back it off.
I also think that the projects that we, that we possibly decide on, I think some of them should be visual so that people see where the money is going and the improvements that have been made.
Oh, well, don't worry, we're gonna, if you do this, we're gonna, we'll be right there with you. Oh, yeah.
Just so we don't have.
You know, I, I am, I'm very much in favor of doing this. We'll put what we.
They make visual stuff.
Yeah.
Terry, is this something we need to make a motion on to give to him?
Well, I was just wondering that myself. I think we can probably just decide amongst ourselves and determine what.
So what is the problem here? Do we have a problem?
Well, I'm just wondering if anybody's come, I'd ask the question about two seventy-five and I'm here coming.
Two seventy-five, I think, we're slowly coming to that.
Let's take another half an hour and figure this out, okay?
Maybe two seventy-four.
Can we just do two seventy-five and move on? I don't get this.
Five, yeah, two seventy-five, yeah.
Fine.
Just do it. You can always change the number.
Yep.
Okay.
But we, but beyond that, the next step is?
To start the list of, um.
What's the priorities?
What's the priority? Where do you want us to look?
All right, well, you're gonna use two seventy-five now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the priorities, we have a plan already in motion, so just take that plan and the priority from that.
Well, so what do you suggest first?
We have a plan, but on this, it's not a separate.
Well, no, no, we, we, yeah, so what I would do is I would, I would use this as a starting point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna add.
So I think we need to reprioritize.
What I'm hearing is I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and I'm adding to this plan.
Yes.
To bring us to a consistent two seventy-five or thereabouts.
Right.
Year over year.
Right.
In our spending for that year. So I'm gonna back into that number. I'm gonna calculate that number for each year and then back in.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
But I think also to address Bill's original concerns, how this all started, was that I think there should be a re-evaluation of what in the next twenty years really is required.
Absolutely, and that's the next piece, yes, but I.
And we're gonna add on top of that.
Right.
Right, so am I, but I, I am keeping what's here though.
Yeah, I have no argument about keeping what's there. I just think that you're, I don't think you're got enough.
Yes.
Okay, all right. You're talking about adding. That's fine, okay, so we're on the same page. So now what's the priority?
Well, can I, can I, it would be good to have a note in there if you really believe that the wastewater treatment plant has another sixty years of life, if we could just have a note in there so that we don't have to, so that next time we look at this, we know that it's out here.
Right, right, okay.
And that it's been thought through.
Okay, sure.
Well, okay, so now it's, we're time to take suggestions from the board members to get this town back in to the real desirable community it once was.
Well, we know we have, we could probably make a rough estimate for the gateway. You know, if we looked at what we talked with the engineer about the signage and then reworking the sidewalks up to, to Cumse Road. I mean, that's.
That's what he's gonna do.
A graspable number.
We're gonna have to move from here.
Right.
In the next month.
Month, right, so that's a graspable number.
I, 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 there was, one of their suggestions was to make this a pedestrian-friendly town, to fill out the trail network completely.
Yep.
Uh, to me, that was a very good suggestion.
Yep.
I, I, we oughta, I, but I don't think it's cheap to do.
No, especially if we wanna include lighting and.
But we oughta do it. We oughta try to do it.
We should take the pedestrian study as, we like it, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah.
There are, there are rough cost estimates in there that we can adjust a little bit. We'll add five or ten percent to their numbers and we'll use those numbers because engineers did those numbers. So that's gonna be my best guess right now.
Well, one of the main reasons for doing the pedestrian study was for the sidewalks, to make it pedestrian-friendly.
Yes.
So sidewalks, I would think would be.
I think that should be a priority.
Right.
Is it, is it?
An absolute priority.
Well, and those, what about the, because he said that his prioritization said that the area around Town Square, the, the hiking trail, extension of the trails, lighting, and all of those things were what he would prioritize as far as the look of the town, the, you know, all of that.
Right?
So do you want, are you okay with yes?
Yes.
Let's, let's, let's think, so we'll get the priorities, but what about signage?
Okay, so signage, yes, part of the.
You do have sidewalks, yes.
I think whatever the study, I mean, they had a whole series of.
Well, and it was broken up nicely too. I mean, so we have the gateway section, then we have to Cumse Road sidewalk. And, and getting back to what we're saying about the town center, what we've been discussing is linking it effectively with the north end of town to keep the bikes off from plowing down pedestrians. So, yeah, that's like another chunk. So it seems like we have chunks that we can work with.
Although we're not gonna go with the, I'm sorry. The two, the two-story garage probably is not something we're.
That's out with the lift.
Yeah, yeah.
The lighting, do you want lighting?
Yeah, curse.
I think, I think to get some momentum here, there's a lot of smaller projects that don't require engineers and studies and things like that that we can do to get a little momentum, to get people to say, oh, that looks really nice. Case in point, that bridge over the dam. That's got wires hanging off it, broken lights. The wood is all faded and going away. I mean, just dressing up that bridge and making it look inviting. Someplace you'd wanna have your wedding party, take a picture. I mean, just little things like that. They don't require studies. Probably not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. Um, don't need an engineer, just.
Clean it up.
Just get a couple, um, builders to make, do a color on it and do it.
Right.
I mean, we've been looking, and there's a dog. Dog doo-doo, they, they hanging off the bridge, so it's like, you know, things like that when we walk around. We, we don't see them because we see them every day.
We're confiscated in the park.
But somebody coming into this town is like, you know, I've seen people saying like, this is such a beautiful town. Why don't, you know, why don't you work on some of this other stuff? So I think there's a lot of stuff like that that it, it doesn't cost any money to go up and get.
You're, you're talking something like a beautification.
Yeah.
Would that fall more under maintenance though, as opposed to CIP?
Some of it would, and, and the bridge, we can very easily add into what we're gonna do with the armory of the dam because we're gonna be taking that whole area apart, um, as part of the armory. So, you know, tying that in, it's a very small portion, um, of the total cost of the project.
That's just one example.
Well, that's a, that's a.
Right.
But those examples.
But those are like that all over the.
You're talking about minor repairs, beautification around town.
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Um, it was, you mentioned something about the town beach. I mean, what, what has to be done at the town beach?
Well, there's, there's a lot of base work that we can do on it. We can, we can do the landscaping around it. It doesn't drain well.
Make a nice sidewalk for people trying to get to the armor in heels.
Sidewalk in this area. There's all kinds of stuff that you could do.
Yeah.
Maybe we should make a list and kind of, I mean, that doesn't require engineering except for drainage?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to the details. Just if beautification is part of it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm doing a list. So, so far I've got the entrance to town, the pedestrian-friendly nature of the town, which includes sidewalks and bike paths and, and signage. The town center with the, the path around Corporans Pond, the lighting of it, that's a, that's a priority.
That's all I'm studying, yeah.
The, um, the beautification stuff, what, what else? I heard connection to the north end, the connection to the center of town with the north.
Right, yes.
Trail system.
That was part of the whole center thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mark, consistently between bike paths, but that, some of that's just internal, you know. Bike paths having different names and hiking paths makes me crazy, but that's not necessarily part of this. It's a fantastic start. I mean, and maybe it's worth starting in small, I mean. Some, some of these numbers have blown me away, like just, oh, the gateway and fix the sidewalk, opt it to Cumse, that, that's a big number.
Well, it's enacting the pedestrian study.
And it's, you know, how many of these big numbers do we wanna throw in there and do we start?
That's a bike park. You may be able to just get a landscape designer and say, hey, this is our vision. What do you think?
Right.
I was just gonna suggest, la- landscape came up at one point in time. Did you have that on your list?
Right, yeah.
Landscape, yeah. Sinage and landscape.
Do you have a question for you on the gateway?
No.
Um, I think I might have forgot, but do we have a number for that gateway and it is, it is already?
We will have it in thirty-five days. We have four, four different numbers in thirty-five days.
And it's not. And it's not a grant, it's the town paying more.
This is town.
No, no more.
Yeah.
So we do have it?
Well, we have, we invested the five thousand dollars into the engineer giving us the four different possibilities and, and general cost yet for each.
Yeah, so the vision is, uh, that we may have to start this next year or?
Yes.
So we go.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a list of priorities at this particular point, doesn't it?
Actually, it's not necessarily priorities, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I need to leave for about twenty minutes. I'll be back.
Okay, we'll, we'll still be here probably, though.
I hope you're not. I mean, these aren't really, well, these are priorities in the fact that everything on this list is a priority, otherwise it wouldn't be on the list.
Right, but these.
We're not prioritizing among the different.
So, so now, let's say that I have two hundred thousand dollars because of this cap, right?
Right.
Consistent cap. I've got two hundred thousand dollars in a year. I'll go to the pedestrian study and I'll take this, this list of items and I'll start plugging numbers in each year to come back up to the cap. So I'm gonna be working with the delta for each year.
Right.
And some of these are big enough projects that they may be put on the plan as a bond so they won't have their total amount impacting each year, right? But I'll level, I'll just level it off.
I did wanna ask that question about, um, the way that things are put on, and I know you and I have discussed it before. If it's a cash reserve, it shows up as a yearly, um, amount.
Yeah.
And if it's a, uh, lease on a vehicle or a building or whatever it is, it shows up a yearly amount.
It's a yearly amount.
But when it's a bond, it shows up as one big lump sum, which really isn't the way that.
I will, I will do what you recommended and I'm gonna import this sheet onto the twenty-year plan and I'm gonna show you at the bottom the year-to-year costs of doing, and I'm gonna erase the total, um, on the CIP, the total appropriation of it.
Total appropriation.
So you're just gonna see year-to-year, you're gonna see those go in there as single numbers, they all do. Um, but you're gonna see the, the actual amount that you have to pay year-to-year on that same sheet.
Okay.
That'd be good, yeah.
Terry, I agree with you, I just didn't, haven't had a chance.
Okay, and again, can you put current over the top of accumulated reserves column?
Yeah, I'll, actually, yeah, cause I gotta change those numbers, cause we've spent some of that money since I put those numbers in. And those numbers are only good for December thirty-first each year because we're spending that money throughout the year.
Okay, but, and then, um, I had talked about on the bottom of each column putting in the tax effect and the, also the total, um, indebtedness, but I don't, now that you're dealing with two seventy-five as a, as a ceiling, I don't think that's necessary anymore.
Well, no, I'll show you the exact number as I go across, come on, that's gonna be plus or minus ten percent.
But I think the debt, the indebtedness, I would like to see down at the bottom anyway too.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll, I'll put all of that.
That puts everything right there in that one sheet, that's good.
See it all on that sheet. Good idea.
All right, any, uh, you're all done with your presentation on that then, Mark or?
Right, but in the priority list, we focused on what people see. But, you know, as far as Bill's, I, I agree with what Bill's saying with, with, um.
Capital replacement.
Capital replacement.
Right.
Of, I'm not talking about necessarily, well, in some cases, we'll expand some of the facilities, but I'm not talking about building five new buildings or adding, uh, miles of water and sewer line. But do you want me to capture more investment in those facilities?
Well, I think his point is well-taken that, you know, it's, we can wish it wouldn't happen, but it, that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. That sooner or later, some of these things are gonna have to be replaced. Now, it may be absolutely accurate that in the next twenty years, none of these things are gonna have to be replaced. But if it went to twenty-five years, you might see something show up at the twenty-fourth year or something like that. This is what I was saying, that the, the department has know a hell of a lot more than I do about it. What, when is this thing gonna have to be replaced? Cause I don't know.
See, that's where I struggle because in a perfect world, you, you, we built this treatment plant in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three. We didn't start replacing, and there was not a single thing replaced in there until the early two thousands. So we went thirty years and now we have replaced or refurbished or whatever everything in there except the ammonia tanks. Every component of the treatment facility has been upgraded in some way over the past fifteen years, okay? So do we wait another thirty years to do that? Or do we go back in and say, gee, before this tank breaks, we're gonna, we're gonna replace it? We might be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars we don't need to.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying. See, I don't know and, and.
We don't know.
Well, no, but you know better than I.
But I think by default, you said that you don't think.
What, we, that's what, that's what we have examined and I've asked Greg, I said, what do we absolutely need to replace in here? He said the ammonia tanks and the aeration system in the, um, in the lagoons.
Okay, so you said, what do we absolutely have to replace? But what if you asked him, what do you anticipate? Are there any other things that you anticipate might, we might have to do?
That's kind of what I was asking when I said, what do we absolutely need to replace? That's, I, we have gone through that exercise.
Okay, well, that.
And you go, you go through the, you go through there right now. Those tanks are pristine. They're, you know, and everything is functioning correctly. Could we, I could put a number in there to replace the control system because I'm sure that technology is gonna change at some point where it would benefit us to be able to replace the control system, the SCADA, you know, the computerized controls. But I can't tell you definitively that that's gonna need to be replaced, you know, is what I mean?
No, but you can, you. Yeah, I know, but it's.
It's hard.
What you're saying is it's your best estimate. It's your best estimate and that's what you're putting down. And, and what I think originally started the whole conversation was, are you sure you've got everything in there? Because we're not, you know, Bill was questioning whether or not it was. If it is, then fine. I, I think that, that you just have to say, that's exactly what it is, Bill.
But he also said that they haven't put a lot of stuff in it for fear of going.
Well, and, and, and we, we make do because that's the approach that the town has taken.
Yeah.
And then what I'm hearing you say is, don't make do.
Well, I.
Do, do everything, but if I do it that way, then I'm replacing fire trucks every, and I hate to go back to vehicles. But I'm replacing vehicles now in, look at the trash truck.
Oh, I know.
You know, I have, we have complete, have always come back to you and said, the useful life of our trash truck is seven years. It drives to Bethlehem three times a week. We need to replace it every seven year. I was told, no, make it ten, make it twelve. You want me to put the trash truck in every seven years? That's when I would replace it. Because that gives us the most resale value, that gives us the best safety for our people. So it's a different way of approaching this whole capital program. That's what I'm struggling with right now, cause I'm getting mixed messages.
I agree with you, cause I've been going through it with you for the last few years and I know exactly what you're saying.
You know, right, because you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
And, and what have we done with the trash truck? We've gone in, we've rebuilt it, we've refurbished it and we've gotten another five years out of it. That's awesome. We've saved the town a lot of money. But what I'm hearing is that you want me to look at it in a, kind of a different way.
Well, I think, I think what was being asked is to go out further and, um.
You can't go out further because it's all.
No, I don't, I don't, no, you originally went, we didn't originally go to twenty years and now you've gone to twenty years. And I think that was what the, the question was. I think that the. I think that the, no, no one was really questioning the next two or three years. It was, do, are we sure we have covered ourselves for the twenty years?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm telling you, this twenty-year plan is fantasy. It is, I don't, no, your question's on the bridges. I don't know. I mean, they could come in and find some bolts are failing and red-list our bridge and that bridge could then become a priority. I, I, twenty years is a long time on this stuff.
I think in the realm of, of the fantasy, but I, as a planning board member, would be very interested in knowing what the professional advice is for anything. If you think it's seven years, to take the example you give, then that should be the seven years.
The thing that I think we're overlooking too, we don't have anything down for the repair, rebuild or whatever for this facility.
Yeah, we do, we have a half a million dollars in it.
Yeah, well, that isn't gonna.
Only half a million dollars is to add one bay
Yeah.
because of the ladder truck. Because we need a new bay for, probably for the truck that, because our truck is not, it's gonna be bigger, the new one. If, if we get it. Okay, so you've got that and some additions and renovations to get the, um, the cell out of the admin area. So that's in the half a million dollars. And we're comfortable that we can do that. But it doesn't address insulation, new windows. But I can replace five windows a year and you guys would never even know. And in three years, I got all the windows replaced in town hall. You know, those are the kinds of things. I'm not gonna, do you want me to put two hundred thousand dollars in there to refurbish town hall? When we can do it in pieces and not even have anyone notice? I, I don't know, tell me.
It doesn't seem necessary. But I, I guess that's part of, like, what I don't know, you talked about having a dry storage for files. Is that something larger or is that something you can sneak in?
Well, if I, if we get the new bay and the cell goes
There?
there, then I've got fireproof storage in the current cell.
Okay.
This replacement of the windows is what you're talking about doing out of the maintenance, the maintenance.
Out of the maintenance budget or the, or the repair and maintenance reserve account, let's create one for buildings and
You should.
you know, and let's, let's do these little things year to year. You know, that's an awesome way to do it.
I think you should.
You know?
So let's do that.
It's gotta be addressed.
And then to, to Bill's point, that way we're not spending two million dollars in one year and we're building a all-new town hall when we don't need to.
Again, that's the sort of thing I'm looking for, just that I can understand what the totals are gonna be as a planning board. Then, then we establish the priorities. Again, I, we're not prioritizing among the things here. We're listing the things that we think.
Right, there's no prioritizing.
They're all, yeah, they're all priority, but we don't know within, within the, the list, what is, has greater priority than other.
And like some sort of perimeter drain system or is there one around this building to prevent any?
Well, and that's the problem, that this room, this room and the, and the evidence room, they, every big storm now, we're flooding.
So what can we do?
And that's because of perimeter drains. But a perimeter drain thing, that's more money, you can't just grab ten thousand bucks and fix that.
So let's throw that into the CIP then, right? I mean, things that will keep the building going forward.
But we wanna know the numbers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Building needs.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can decide whether we want a new fire truck or whether we need to use that money to build perimeter drains.
Yeah, but see, not, and then, and that's the other thing that we can't, this isn't, like, there are some things that are not an either-or. There are some things that are gonna be, we need to do
Right.
this. And so maybe we highlight those things for you too, as to what are the absolutes
Right.
in those given years.
That would be good.
That would be good.
So, like, the Corfords Pond, the, the dam, that's an ab, you know, we are not gonna be given a choice by the state
You said that.
to do.
We're spending that money.
We are spending at least four hundred thousand. Right now, that's what we're trying to
Keep it to.
make sure.
Keep it to.
So. Yeah, I'm loving this, this is. And, and I know Brooks is really happy because we cut all of the parks and rec stuff,
Right.
which goes to the way we look as a community. I would, I would love to take what Craig is doing at the golf course
Right.
and spread that across all of the town facilities, 'cause he's doing a great job.
He is.
And he's investing a lot in that facility.
Yep.
Let's do the same thing on Packard's Field. Let's do the same thing at the Curious George Cottage and all of the other stuff and make our stuff look really nice, you know? Um, so we're, we're all for it, yeah.
And that could be an actual proper parks and rec department.
Absolutely.
One dedicated to the beautification of the town.
Right.
Right.
Right now, there's nobody
All the trails.
Nobody responsible for that except for volunteers, citizens.
Exactly, and, and taking, not taking over, but augmenting what the AIA is trying to do by putting it under Brooks' purview and really having a trail maintenance crew that works for us in the summer and fixes them up and, and maintains them.
That'd be really great.
You know, that's, that would be an awesome thing. Gonna add a little bit to the operating budget, think about it. But if it's a part-time seasonal person, then, you know, let's see what it does. Awesome, okay.
All right, I guess that would conclude the discussion on the CIP. So are you, will you be coming in next, Lynn?
Well, I hope so, but, I don't know.
Should we put you on the agenda?
Put it, yeah, let's put it on the agenda and we'll show you what we have.
Okay.
And then.
They'll go under old.
Well, yeah, I wanna get something by your November meeting
Yeah, right.
because we'll have to start putting the budget together. So two seventy-five and we're working on it.
But the most important part of the CIP is still like the next year or two. I mean, that's really what we focus on, right? A lot of these things are being put further out.
I think you oughta, you oughta stay with your, your statutory mandate, which is the six-year plan.
Right.
You need to be very comfortable with that six years.
Okay. And then once.
And then after that is all, we'll outline it and.
And once we approve the CIP, then you take that and shift that current year over to the budget, right?
To the budget.
That goes to the town.
To the selectmen.
With the suggestion that the planning board put this together.
Selectmen decide whether or not to take your plan and whether or not to present it to town meeting. They pres, you know, what gets presented and then town meeting votes on what we actually do.
Do you actually present the CIP or just the budget?
I, we only present the budget.
Okay.
Um, if you, and that could be something, some towns put the CIP in their annual report. And if you want, if you're, if you really wanna have that discussion during the budget hearing in that town meeting, and we may even want a special budget hearing that focuses on the capital program.
The new enhanced capital.
The new enhanced capital program, so you guys can do this presentation to everybody.
Okay, I don't think you wanna have that discussion at town meeting, I think you wanna have that discussion at separate meeting.
I, that's up to you, schedule whatever you want.
Okay. All right, well, we'll set you up for the next meeting then and, uh,
Okay.
take it from that point under old. Just in time. Did we get copies of the signed, um, review?
Do you write? Um. No, I think I just, I'd.
They're right here, they're right here.
Somewhat readable.
Well, Bill's an apple guy and that's the way it emailed out.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the, um, sign, the full sign package with your.
Right, yeah. Right, here, let me, let me just, um, give you a summary. We, we took two meetings and we went through all of the detail. There were a number of suggested improvements and I've basically rewritten and tried to incorporate all those suggested improvements into this document. What I'm suggesting we do, not go through this right now, all right? Because it, it'll take a while to read it. But I would ask that all of the board members read it and provide some feedback. And I'd also, I think it'd be appropriate if we, as Mark, to send this to the general counsel, have them review it so, so they can comment on whether they think it's legal or not legal or make suggested improvements. And assuming we don't get any major changes, what I'd like to do is schedule a public hearing then at the next regular meeting. So that would be my recommendation. But I'm open to other suggestions.
Does anybody have any comments?
Well, no, you read it and you can see, email me comments or anything, yeah.
Should we push a public hearing to November though, so we have?
I, I, I think we're running out of time, right?
No, 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 we're, we're okay time-wise.
Well, I, I'm okay with November then, whatever you wanna do.
November, the, the November, December timeframe, I think, is more appropriate for the public hearings. Uh, you wanna do it at least by December so you can hold a double one if you make any other changes.
Okay.
Um, on the email, please email the comments to Mary or myself and we'll get them. I don't, I don't want your emails going back and forth. Um, just to try to protect your computers if anything were said. Don't do town
Town business.
business directly with each other. Like, just send it to us and we'll get it out. We need to get it out to everyone at the same time.
My question was, did anybody have any comments on Bill's suggestion?
I agree.
I liked it.
Okay. And let's do that. Uh, Mark, will you get that to the council?
Yeah, we'll get it to the council.
All right, very good, thank you, Bill. And we'll go on to committee reports.
Oh, I might add, my dog thanks you for letting me go.
Poor baby.
I bet he was excited. Okay, committee reports, town core group.
Um, I kind of already said where we're at with the engineer and in about a month we'll have clear reviews of, of the possibilities for the gateway.
Said you had four requests for proposals.
Four possible, yeah, well, no, four possible, um, cross-sections that the engineer's gonna do.
Oh, okay. Okay, any communications, Mary?
Um, you should have something in your packets. Came in the email yesterday, some workshops at local council.
Okay, do we have the notices for these meetings?
And then I gave everybody an updated, um, rules.
Panel?
Yeah, the procedures with the electronic participation information in there.
Okay, does anybody have any other business that you wanna bring up?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Techler files, do you want to remove the two meetings per month from that?
Yes. Yeah, I think we did talk about that.
Yeah, I think I, I have one thing that Planning Board might be interested in. The Forest Service held a meeting called, they're calling it the Winona Project. Now, let me start with the Forest Service. Because they're, they're, they're always trying to develop plans, they never implement any of them because they can't get any funding. So, I, everything, you take this with the greatest soul, all right? But anyway, there were two points that came up in this discussion. They were looking for input from the community as to things that, improvements that should be made in the Forest Service, made in the surrounding White Mountain National Forest area. So there were two suggestions that came up that, that impact the valley, um, that I think are something we should be aware of. One, I, I would not be aware, but there's a thing called the Smartsbrook, the Smartsbrook, uh, mountain bike trail network. And I think you get at it through going up through, off the back way, not off of forty-nine. But somehow it's a, there, most of the people who are at this meeting were from the Pemeterwaset Trail Vikings Club or something. And there's a ton of them. And they, they were suggesting that, that this is one of the best networks and that the way to make it better, from their standpoint, was that it lacks beginner network. And they wanted to see if there wasn't a way to connect the Smartsbrook back up to Waterville Valley. And there are roads in there and I guess there have to be some improvements that would have to be made, but, uh, so that was the suggestion. And parking is an issue with all these trailheads. And we could solve the parking problem because we got all these parking lots sitting up there by the mountain that are basically empty and could be used for parking if, if people could get from there down to the Smartsbrook Trail Network. So that was one thing, I, you know. So just so you'd be aware of it, I sounded like an interesting suggestion. The other was that, um, they believe that there should be more camping available for people with RVs. And to do that, you need, uh, hookups, sanitary hookups and electric and all that stuff. And they, they said that the Waterville campsite in particular was now only about thirty percent utilized. So they, and they thought that of all the places, that would be the place to do it because it's easy to, to connect. I mean, it's not far to get to the utilities there. So, but again, you know, are they gonna do anything? Not likely. But those were two suggestions they had that I thought that were kind of interesting.
So, and you're saying they're looking for other suggestions, is that what they were?
Oh, yeah, they're looking for all kinds of feedback, you know, but, you know, it's the things we might do. Yeah. We told them, I told them fix Triple I Road and then they said, oh, well, you know, we're already, that's a separate project we're working on, don't worry about that.
They're working on that?
They claim they're working on it, so.
Which end?
This end. The problem is with Triple I Road is the roads, they, they had originally, they're gonna take the whole thing back to a dirt road. I thought they were gonna do it this summer, uh, which would be a major improvement. But the, the, the old academy is now far worse than the other side. The other side of the road is fine, you know, where it's all dirt.
Yeah.
You get some gigantic puddles, that's the thing, they can't graze it because it's paved and you can't graze on that road.
But that's beyond the scope of this
Yeah.
planning exercise, so they're doing this. As, as some gat fly in the thing pointed out, I've been to six, five of these planning meetings, she never damn do a damn thing.
Okay, any other new business? Do you want to take a motion to adjourn then?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?